Nine o'clock everyone and good morning to everyone. We certainly appreciate everyone joining us, uh, being on time. And, uh, we just have so much to be thankful for and I'm just thankful that, uh, we have such a team as we do and we pray and continue to hope and, 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 and pray that, uh, we continue to do the right thing and with the right heart. So with that said, I am calling the meeting to order. At this time, it's a pleasure for me to, uh, ask Pastor Alan Griffith if he will lead us with the invocation. Pastor Griffith?
Let's pray together. Father God, we come today with grateful hearts. Father, thankful for the blessing of life, thankful for all that you do for us. Uh, Lord, we are most thankful for, uh, for what Jesus did for us and and for our sins, that we could have forgiveness, that we could have eternal life. Lord, I, I thank you for the grace and the mercy that you extend to us every day. And Father, I, I pray that each of us would have a heart as your word has asked of us that as we have received grace and forgiveness and mercy, Lord, that we extend that to others. Uh, Father, we, uh, we are a nation that's in trouble. We, there's so much going on all around us with the social unrest, with the pandemic. Uh, Father, with the loss of jobs and I know things are opening back up now, but uh, Lord, we, we're a nation that just desperately needs you. Uh, Father, I believe with, with my, all my heart that you are the answer. And, and God, if we would just do our part to, to be responsible and, and to trust you, Father, we, we just pray that you would pull your spirit out among your people that, that there would, uh, be an awakening to the gospel. Lord, so many of our problems in this country would be fixed if, if people would just love you and, and listen and love the gospel. So God, we just pray for an awakening in the hearts of people to, to that very fact. Uh, Father, I thank you for the leadership. Uh, this council is provided for our city. I pray, Lord, that you continue to grant to them the wisdom that they need, the unity that they need to, uh, be the example to the community of, of, uh, how we need to work together and Father, how we need to get through all of this. Father, we, as so many people have said, we're, we're all in this together. And it's going to take all of us doing our part. So Father, just bless this council as a work to the future and, uh, to bring about things that would make for peace in our city. So bless us, Father, this day and we give you the praise, the glory and the honor for all of it. In the name of our mighty Savior, Jesus, that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you so very much, Pastor Griffith. At this time, I'd like to call on Councilman Gordon to lead us with the pledge and we can stand or remain seated, but, uh, I hope everyone can see the flag over my left shoulder. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I think you're muted, Mayor.
Yeah, I didn't touch it. It's dead and on his arm. So can everyone hear me? Can everyone? Okay, thank you. Uh, before we get into the agenda, council, uh, as we all know that Melanie is not here today, let's continue to keep her and the family in, in prayer. But with that said, I would like to ask for a motion, uh, from the council to, uh, appoint Shannon Davis as the acting city clerk, uh, at this time. May I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second, uh, Councilwoman Johnson. Okay, call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
He's, he's muted.
He's muted.
We can't hear you, Arthur.
Councilmember Bailey is muted too.
Dave? Can you all? Can you hear me now?
Yes, Councilmember Bailey is muted too.
Okay.
Yes, I'm muted automatically.
All right, Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, so very much. Proceeding on, we do not have any presentation or proclamation. So under the City Clerk Council, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the June fifteen twenty twenty work session. May I have a motion? We have a motion? Who, who was that by?
Motion to approve, author Dave.
Motion by Mr. Dave. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Bailey. Okay. Call for the vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Thank you. And now, Council, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the June sixteenth, uh, council meeting. May I have a motion for the approval of the, um, sixteenth of June council meeting? May I have a motion, Council?
To approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Benton. We have that, Shannon?
Yeah, Mr. Bailey.
He beat Arthur to the draw.
That's right.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson and a second by, uh, Mr. Bailey. Call for the vote, Mrs., uh, uh, Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
I'm staying.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Okay, proceeding on. Council, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the June twenty-third and June twenty-fourth, uh, budget work session. And we will take those together if that's the pleasure of the council. So again, I would like to ask for a motion for the June twenty-third as well as June twenty-fourth, uh, budget work session. May I have a motion? Motion, motion by Mr. Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordon. Okay. Now, uh, Mrs. Davis?
Yes. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Now, Mrs. Davis, if I accidentally call you Mrs. Lee, still love me now.
I, I will.
That's a great thing, okay?
Yes, sir.
Proceeding on, Council, on the City Council. At this time, Council, are there any unfinished business? Okay, since there is not, we will proceed with the resolutions and on the administration. We have resolution number twenty twenty dash one sixty-six to be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with the state of Alabama, acting by and through Alba to make improvements along Fourteenth Street, Fifth Avenue and Broad Street, project number T A P P C dash T A seventeen nine nineteen. Mrs. Davis?
Resolution number twenty twenty one six six. Be it resolved by the city of Phoenix City as follows. Number one, that the city enter into an agreement with the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation relating to the transportation alternative project. Project number T A P P C dash T A one seven nine one nine. C P M S, reference number one zero 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 six seven two one seven for Fourteenth Street Streetscapes and ADA Improvements Project, which agreement is before this council. And number two, that the agreement be executed in the name of the city for and on behalf of the city by its mayor and city manager. And number three, that the agreement be attested by the city clerk and the seal of the city affixed thereto. Be it further resolved that upon the completion of the execution of the agreement by all parties, that a copy of such agreement be kept on file by the city clerk, passed, approved and adopted this seventeenth day of June twenty twenty, ratified this seventh day of July twenty twenty.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to ratify this approval, please.
Motion to ratify.
Motion, Mr. Day, and that's the second, Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
All right, we have that, uh, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Council, any comments or discussion? All right, at this time, like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Also, next, Council on the resolutions is a resol- on the administration, excuse me, is a resolution in public notice in reference to a public hearing of the proposed twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one fiscal year proposed budget. Mrs. Davis?
Okay, I will read the resolution and public notice. Resolu- resolution is as follows. Whereas section five point zero five of the city charter of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, provides that the city council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed budget. And whereas the proposed budget has been submitted to the city council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that a public hearing shall be held on Thursday, August sixth, twenty twenty at seven o'clock P M Eastern Time on the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one proposed budget. And that public notice shall be given in the Citizen News of East Alabama at least seven days prior to said public hearing. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the public notice attached hereto is approved and shall be advertised as provided herein above by the city clerk of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, passed, approved and adopted this seventh day of July. Public notice reads as follows. The city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, will, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August sixth, twenty twenty at seven o'clock P M Eastern Time in the Martin Idle Hour Park Community Center, located at thirty-seven forty-three Moon Lake Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama, on the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one proposed budget. A copy of the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one proposed budget is on file in the office of the city clerk, six oh one twelfth street, Phoenix City, Alabama. This proposed budget is available for public inspection between the hours of eight o'clock A M and five o'clock P M Monday through Friday, through Friday.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. And Council, I would ask that we take those two motions, uh, those two, uh, separately, the resolution and the public notice. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the resolution. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Gordon, and that's the second, Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. And, and now, Council, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the public notice. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mr. Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey? Okay. We have the motion and a second. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. The next Council on Administration. We have a resolution in reference to approving final settlement in the matter of Stacy S. Cook, Frank Cook, and W R C A minor by and through his parents and next friends. Stacy S. Cook and Frankie Frank Cook versus the city of Phoenix City Civil Action Number C V dash eighteen dash nine zero 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 eight two in an amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Mrs. Davis?
Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept and approve of the final settlement in the matter of Stacy S. Cook, Frank Cook, and W R C A minor by and through his parents and next friends. Stacy S. Cook and Frank Cook versus the city of Phoenix City, Civil Action Number C V dash eighteen dash nine zero 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 eight two in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and does further authorize payment thereof. Passed, approved and adopted this seventh day of July twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis.
You're welcome.
Uh, Council, at this time, we've heard the reading of the resolution. I would like to ask for a motion for approval, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey? Any comments or discussion, Council? Okay, there not being any, like to call for the vote.
Councilmember Davis? Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Proceeding on. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the takeover of monthly payments to Alabama Power Company for five L E D area streetlight fixtures located on Crosswind Drive off Highway four thirty-one. Mrs. Davis?
Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city will pay the monthly electric service to Alabama Power Company for the streetlights as follows. One, five four thousand through ten thousand five hundred Lumen Bronze L E D area fixtures located on Crosswinds Drive off Highway four thirty-one South. Passed, approved and adopted this seventh day of July twenty twenty.
Okay. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Any comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Good, thank you. And, uh, the last one on the, the administration is a resolution in reference to authorizing the takeover of monthly payments to Alabama Power Company for five four thousand to ten thousand five hundred L E D payments to Alabama Power Company. Uh, area streetlights fixture and sixteen, sixteen, eighteen thousand to twenty-five thousand L E D area streetlights fixtures at Renfro's Market located on Highway four thirty-one South. Mrs. Davis?
Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city will pay the monthly electric service to Alabama Power Company for the streetlights as follows. One, five four thousand to ten thousand five hundred Lumen Bronze L E D area fixtures at the Renfro's Market located on Highway four thirty-one South. Two, sixteen, eighteen thousand to twenty-five thousand Lumens Bronze L E D area fixtures at the Renfro's Market located on Highway four thirty-one South. Passed, approved and adopted this seventh day of July twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval. May I have a motion, Council?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mr. Gordon, second, Mr. Day?
That's right.
Comments or discussion, Council? Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, on the Building Department Council. We have resolutions in reference to declaring properties a public nuisance and authorizing and directing the housing abatement board to take necessary action to demolish, remove and clear all building materials, trash and debris from the following properties. Twelve oh six Fourteenth Avenue, three eleven South Seale Road, three twenty-three South Seale Road, ten fifteen Fourth Street South. And Council, at, at the pleasure of the Council, I would like to ask that we take all these in, in one, uh, vote. And with that said, I would ask the clerk to read the, uh, master resolution. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City has declared four properties located within Phoenix City, Alabama, to be a public nuisance in accordance with Alabama State Law, section eleven dash five three A dash one. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the housing abatement board is hereby authorized and directed to take the next necessary action to demolish, remove and clear all building materials, trash and debris from each property and to have the lots cleared at the following locations in Phoenix City, Alabama. One, twelve oh six Fourteenth Avenue. Two, three eleven South Seale Road. Three, three two three South Seale Road. And number four, one zero one five Fourth Street South. Be it further resolved that the cost of demolition by the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, shall be assessed against the property taxes. Passed, approved and adopted this seventh day of July twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Davis.
You're welcome.
Council, we've heard the reading of the master resolution on these properties. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, Mr. Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Council, next, on the Building Department. We have a resolution in reference to approving the lowest price quote from Harrington Paint Company to paint and renovate the Art Center building in an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City is proposing to paint and renovate the Art Center. And whereas the city of Phoenix City has solicited quotes for said construction. And whereas the city of Phoenix City received two quotes to paint and renovate the Art Center with Harrington Paint Company being the lowest responsible proposal in an amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes that the mayor and city manager accept this quote and enter into an, into a contract with Harrington Paint Company in an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand seven hundred dollars to paint and renovate the Art Center. Passed, approved and adopted this seventh day of July twenty twenty.
Okay. Council, we've heard the resolution. It's time I'd like to ask for a motion for approval. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, that's the motion, Mr. Gordon, and second, Mr. Day?
Yes.
Okay, we have that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
All right, Council, are there any comments or discussion?
Uh, quickly, uh, Mayor, if we could, excuse me, have someone to, um, just state, uh, for our citizens, uh, where exactly is the Art Center building? We know that we're doing some renovations on our municipal uh, building and, and, and a lot of other places within the city. Just, but again, just for, um, clarification, the Art Center building, where is it located?
The Art Center building is located in between the tennis courts on Airport Road that's down from the Rory Martin Center and it sits between the baseball field, which is right across the street from the track at Idle Hour Park. That's the location of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? If not, Council, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, proceeding on the Police Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor, city manager and chief of police to sign an agreement with the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agency Inc. for the accreditation and certification for the Police Department. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City desires to enter into an agreement with Kalia, the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agency, Inc., for the accreditation and certification for the Police Department. And whereas the city council has reviewed said agreement submitted by Kalia for a one-time payment for a total of eleven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And whereas the city council finds the agreement to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of the city business. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor, city manager and police chief are hereby authorized and directed to sign such agreement with Kalia. Passed, approved and adopted this seventh day of July twenty twenty.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Davis.
You're welcome.
Council of all of us has heard the reading of the resolution. May I have a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mrs. Johnson, second, Mr. Bailey? Do you have that, Davis?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, Council, are there any comments or discussion? Okay. If not, like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now proceeding on the Police Department Council is a resolution in reference to declaring personal property as surplus and disposing of, for the nominal sum of one dollars and other valuable considerations to the family of Assistant Chief Green Gilliam in recognition of her thirty-three plus years of public service. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas section eleven forty-three dash fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following described property is hereby declared surplus to be disposed of for the consideration of the nominal sum of one dollar and other valuable considerations to the family of Assistant Chief Gail Green Gilliam in recognition of her thirty-three plus years of public service and dedication to the Phoenix City Police Department and the citizens of the city of Phoenix City. One, two badge, Blackington Model B seven three six R. Number two, one campaign police hat. Passed, approved and adopted this seventh day of July twenty twenty.
Thank you. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mr. Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gordon?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. We have the motion and second, Council? Comments or discussion? Okay. Like to call for-
Just one brief comment, Mayor. And I know we spoke about Gail on yesterday, but again, I know, um, the citizens of Phoenix City is going to miss Gail and I think I can speak on behalf of them. We would truly miss her. And we want to just again, thank her for her lawyer commitment to the city, to the Police Department and to her family above all. So again, we're just gonna miss Gail.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, Council, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Council, proceeding on, on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor, city manager and city attorney to sign documentation with A D M to appoint the director of utilities, Stephen Smith, as the representative to aid them to provide state refund revolving fund wastewater loans. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, is in need of funding for capital improvements for its wastewater system. And whereas the city has submitted an application to A D M for funding of the needed capital projects through the state revolving fund. And whereas A D M requires this city to designate and authorize representative to provide needed information and documentation. And whereas the city appoints the director of utilities, Stephen Smith, as its representative for this application. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorize the mayor, city manager and city attorney to sign documentation with A D M to appoint director of utilities, Stephen Smith, as the city representative for state revolving fund wastewater loans. Passed, approved and adopted this seventh day of July twenty twenty.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Davis.
You're welcome.
Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to approve. May I have a motion, Council?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Day. Comments or discussion?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Uh, I know we spoke on yesterday, I asked a question, definitely between the loan and the grant. And he did a fantastic job on explaining it to us, but I would like- But I would like for him to explain it to the citizens of Phoenix City, if you don't mind. Elaborate on that for a little while.
Steve?
Sure. Uh, we've got two loan applications through the state revolving fund. Uh, one is for the water distribution system, which is the new water service line that will, from Glenwood Tank down Sunville Road, and then the wastewater system, which includes improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, the, uh, new sewer line that we're putting in over on Bridgewater, the Saddle Brook Lift Station improvements, and improvements to the, uh, collection system where we're going through and inspecting all forty-five-hundred manholes. Uh, the projects will take about two and a half years altogether. Uh, as part of, uh, the agreement with the state, we'll be borrowing funds at two-point-two percent interest, and a portion of the principal will be forgiven by the state uh, in the form of principal forgiveness or grants.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve. All right. With that said, counsel, uh, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Oh, she's muted. Councilmember Johns?
Okay, I'm sorry. I unmute myself. Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also on the Utilities Department, uh, that we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor, city manager, and city attorney to sign documentation with ADEM to appoint Director of Utilities, Stephen Smith, as the representative to aid them to provide state refund revolving fund drinking water loans. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, is in need of funding for capital improvements for its water treatment and distribution system. And whereas the city has submitted an application to ADEM for funding of the needed capital projects through the state revolving fund. And whereas ADEM requires the city to designate and authorize representatives to provide needed information and documentation. And whereas the city appoints the Director of Utilities, Stephen Smith, as its representative for this application. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizing the mayor, city manager, and city attorney to sign documentation with ADEM to appoint Director of Utilities, Stephen Smith, as the city representative for state revolving fund drinking water loans. Passed, approved, and adopted this seventh day of July, 2020.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Thank you.
Counsel, we've all heard the reading of the resolution. Uh, at this time, I'm not going to ask for any comments or discussion because, uh, Mr. Smith did allude to this one also. So with that said, I would like to ask, call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
We have a motion.
Yes, sir.
Hold on, hold on.
He said, uh, revolve drinking water loans. This is the wastewater loans, isn't it? Did you read the same one the second time?
No, sir.
No, sir.
This one said, I think the second one was wastewater loans. Did you read drinking water loans? On the last?
She did the first order, Mr. Gordy. She did the wastewater one first and then the drinking one.
It's backwards in my book, man. Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Bailey. Uh, so with that said, at the time, I'd like to call for the vote.
Motion to approve. We need a motion first, Mayor.
Then we get a motion? Okay, motion to approve. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
To approve.
All right, motion, Mrs. Johnson, and second, Mr. Day?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Council, um, Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, counsel, on the license application. This is the first reading. We have an application for a bonding company license submitted by Christopher Aaron for Aaron's Bell Bonds Company, LLC, located at sixty-four Lee Road, twenty-sixty-eight, Phoenix City, Alabama, three-six-eight-seven-zero. At this time, counsel, I would like to ask, uh, for the first reading by the clerk. Mrs. Davis?
Okay. I have three memos. First memo coming from the Police Department referencing Christopher Aaron, Aaron's Bell Bonds Company, LLC, sixty-four Lee Road, twenty-sixty-eight, Phoenix City, Alabama, three-six-eight-seven-zero. I have reviewed this application for bonding company license, and I have no objections to the issuance of this license to this applicant based upon his criminal background investigation. Signed Raymond J. Smith, Chief of Police. Second memo coming from the Fire Department. Dear Ms. Lee, this letter is in reference to the application submitted by Christopher Aaron for Aaron's Bell Bonds Company, LLC, located at sixty-four Lee Road, twenty-sixty-eight, in Phoenix City, Alabama, three-six-eight-seven-zero, for bonding company license. This address is out of the Phoenix City Fire Department's jurisdiction. Sincerely, James Marcus Wells. Third memo coming from the Building Department. Dear Ms. Lee, this letter is in reference to the application submitted by Christopher Aaron of Aaron's Bell Bonds Company, LLC, located at sixty-four Lee Road, twenty-sixty-eight, Phoenix City, Alabama, three-six-eight-seven-zero, for a bonding company license. This facility is located outside the Building Department's policing jurisdiction. This office has no objections to the approval of this license. Sincerely, Ray Rogers, Deputy Building Official.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
You're welcome.
Counsel, we've all heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to place on first reading?
All right, motion, Mr. Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordy. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, at this time, counsel, I'd like to call on our city attorney, Mr. Jimmy Graham. Jimmy? Can you hear me? Jimmy?
He's on mute.
Jimmy can't hear you. Jimmy? Are you... Are you on mute?
I didn't think I was.
Okay, now we can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. All right. Uh, we have one claim today. It's Daniel Lee. Lives at nine-oh-seven Sixth Place South, Phoenix City, Alabama. Uh, back in January, he was, uh, going to Columbus, uh, hit a pothole and did damage to, uh, the wheel and, and the cover, uh, on his, um, BMW. He filed a claim, and as the mayor pointed out yesterday, uh, it wasn't timely, but also, uh, that section of, uh, road that where the pothole was is maintained by the Alabama Department of Transportation, and that's their responsibility. I've already written him a letter, uh, that's in the package telling him to file his claim with them. Um, so my recommendation is just to deny the claim.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Counsel, we've heard the, uh, recommendation by attorney to deny. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of that recommendation. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second.
Yeah.
You have that, Mrs. Lee, Mr. Gordy, and Mr. Day?
Yes, sir.
All right. At this time, call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did I just say, Mrs. Lee?
That's, that's...
Well, forgive me. I admitted that in the beginning. Go ahead.
That's all right.
I apologize. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Um, Mayor, I just wanted to remind everybody, I think I've talked to just about everybody on the, um, council on our political sign ordinance uh, that was passed. Uh, we got a call from the Secretary of State's Office, Mr. Hugh Evans, uh, that indicated that it was a violation of, of the Constitution to do that limitation of thirty days. Uh, he also sent us a case that the U.S. Supreme Court, uh, decided, uh, saying that if it's content-based sign, you can't, uh, limit it. So basically, somebody could put up, um, let's just say for instance, a, um, Joe Biden or a Donald Trump sign and put it in their yard and keep it up four years and, and we can't do anything about that. And I just wanted everybody to know since signs have started popping up that everyone can go ahead and start putting their signs up too if they hadn't already.
Okay.
Address the right-of-way, um, attorney?
Yeah, but we can keep them off the right-of-way. This is only on the private property portion uh, that we can't limit. Uh, there's, uh, we can absolutely prohibit uh, signs on, in the right-of-way and, uh, on city property. So, uh, just keep that in mind.
So what, what you're saying, so, uh, a- as far as that aspect, i- it can start, or will it still needs to start on the twenty-fifth of July as far as the right-of-way? Up until August?
No, 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 no. You can't put them on the right-of-way, period.
So as far as putting them out, not on the right-of-way, does it still applies to the July the twenty-fifth to the August the twenty-fifth? Or is it just based on private property of putting signs and we have no control there?
Yeah, as long as it's on private property, we can't prohibit when they put it up.
Okay. But when, when they start putting them out outside the city, within the city, through the city, does that still apply to the July the twenty-fifth to the August the twenty-fifth, what I'm asking? So that doesn't apply either, then?
No.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure we clarified.
Yeah. Yeah, but there's an absolute prohibition against putting them in the right-of-way at any time.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions, counsel, on that?
Just want to clarify something with, with Jimmy, if I can. Basically, the only place we have ever been able to put them legally was on private property. So I'm assuming nothing has changed as it used to be. Uh, the time limit went away, but you still can only put them on private property always. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay. So even a place of business that somebody owns, that's still considered a private property, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Hey, for instance, though, for instance, up here on the corner of, uh, uh, Thirteenth and Broad, the city owns that corner. They're prohibited from putting signs on, on that property.
Correct. Yeah, that used to be Mr. Buddy Hilton's, but the city purchased that. Right.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Jimmy. Any other comments or questions? All right. Uh, department heads, we certainly appreciate you all. Let's stay safe and careful out there and just keep your heart on what you're doing as you've always done. And with that, uh, counsel, is there anything anyone would like to say? Before I do make this announcement and then have the city manager come last, but anything that, uh, counsel would like to say?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, uh, say, uh, I want to give thanks to all those that came out to the River Current Ceremony at Ranford Grove on four-thirty-one there. It was really exciting time, and, and, uh, as I said on yesterday, uh, we received a lot of positive from the, uh, citizens down on that end, not only citizens, but, uh, everywhere. As a matter of fact, when I was down on yesterday, I talked to some elder couple down there, and they were from North Phoenix City, and we talked, and, um, she said, "This is really a plus for the South End of Time." I said, "Well, actually, it's a plus for the whole city of Phoenix City." And so we're excited about that down there. Um, and one other thing that I'd like to say about, uh, Ms. Gail, uh, our Assistant Chief, Ms. Gail Green Gilliam, uh, I'd like to say this. I had the opportunity to present her with a plaque, uh, one of the first black female Assistant Police Chief here in Phoenix City. I had the opportunity to present that plaque to her a few months back, and I still have that, uh, one, the pres- the presentation of that program. And I can say this. I know Gail, uh, she grew up in South Phoenix City. I know Gail and her family. And, uh, as I said on yesterday, uh, at Mount Moriba Baptist Church, we associate with, uh, with fellowship with, with my church and, uh, her church, and I got to know her and her family, and they are uh, real nice folks. And I can say, uh, what had been said already, she will be missed by the entire community. And, uh, she set an example for all of us. She was a lovely individual, and, uh, you know, I don't know anything that I could say bad about her. We wore that smile. We spoke many times. So, uh, she definitely will be missed. I'd like to say this to the family of Gail. Uh, we will be praying for you, and as I said on yesterday, God is too wise to make a mistake. But, you know, prayer, prayer can change things. Prayer can go where no other can go. And what we gotta do is love each one another. You know, that's what we gotta do. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to say these words. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else before I make this announcement? I do, uh, counsel, thank you so much. I am, uh, prepared to make the announcement today for the, uh, upcoming elections of this council members as well as the Phoenix City, uh, Board of Education. It was published in the paper on July the second, uh, which was last week. And the qualifying date starts today, and the last day for qualifying is the twenty-first. So I am declaring this and announcing, uh, the election for the council member of Phoenix City as well as the Phoenix City School Board. So the, it starts today, and as I stated, the last day of qualification is the twenty-first of, uh, this month. Okay? For all candidates who, who wants to, uh, put their name in the hat by either the, uh, school board or the city council. All right, Mr. Hunter, and then I'll come back and close us out. Anything, Mr. Hunter, you would like to say?
I only want to talk about one thing, and that's basically hoping and wishing that everybody will stay safe and stay conscientious of your surroundings and what you do away from work as well as what we're doing at work because we're going through a lot to keep our workforce together right now. And as I spoke on yesterday, I would like to commend, um, school system, Randy Wilks, Superintendent Randy Wilks, on his policy that he put in place. We had to put the policy in place months ago to take care of some of the things and try to combat things, but they have really got a battle trying to, um, think about which ways they're gonna go about getting these kids educated and getting them back to school. So the policy that he's put in place, as I said on yesterday, I heard Friday some great comments from other school systems on that they are passing around what they put in place in Phoenix City. And that's something that should make all of us proud because they're really trying to do the best they can with these unforeseen grounds that we are traveling on. You know, so, um, I'd like to commend them, and like I said again, I hope everybody stays safe, and that's all I have to say at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. With that said, uh, I'd like to thank the council again. Uh, as I stated yesterday, we're a team. It's important that we continue to lift each other up, more importantly, to lift this community up uh, with prayer as has been stated, but with fervent prayer. So with that said, uh, we'd like to also thank CTV Beans for bringing this to our citizen and to our community. And at this time, counsel, uh, we do stand adjourned. Thank you all so much. Let's be careful and safe.